Please take your seats, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the May 24th, 2019 meeting to order. Do we have any special intentions? Mayor Zahn?
Like to keep Bob Ross, our PIO, in our thoughts and prayers. He's doing well, but he did have open-heart surgery. I believe it was on Wednesday morning. We actually got a message from him or his family that he is doing well and he's recovering. So let's just keep him in our thoughts and prayers, and we do miss Bob. Thank you.
Thank you. No others. Councilwoman McKinney, would you lead us in a prayer?
Dear Lord, please watch over this chamber and help us and guide us through and make the best decisions going forward. Lord, give us honesty, integrity, and guidance, and may we work through you and do everything in your name. Amen.
Councilman Segura, would you lead us into pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum this evening. Councilman Carroll is absent. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones, pagers, beepers, and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item one is approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of May 9th, 2019, and the special session of May 20th, 2019. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A, at the application number 2165-19, First Baptist Church of Kenner, to hold a public gathering on June 3rd through the 7th, 2019, from 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and on June 5th, 2019, from 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., for the purpose of a vacation Bible school at 1400 Williams Boulevard. Item 3B is application number 2166-19, Rejoice Incorporated, to hold a public gathering on June 22nd, 2019, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., for the purpose of a festival at 2146-2150, Reverend Richard Wilson Drive. Item 3C is application number 2168-19, The Johnson and Marshall Family, to hold a public gathering on July 27th, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., for the purpose of a family reunion at Veterans Park. Item four is correspondence reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads. Item 4A, at the request of the administration, a report from Mayor Zahn.
Mayor?
Thank you, Council Chairman. Two quick things. We did some more code sweeps this past two weeks in District 1 with the help of Councilman Carroll's office. The 2,600, 2,700 blocks of Kingston and Salem, we had 66 violations, 18 warning violations, and five court summons. Then the next week, we did the two, in District 1, the 200 to 300 blocks of Centany, 300 to 400 blocks of Audubon, and the 300 block of Plantation. Forty-nine violations, 14 warning violations, and 10 court summons. Not as low as we'd like it to be, but of course, our code department, the men and ladies of the code department, along with James Mohammed and Molly McGinnis, have continued to keep our city clean and get out there and make sure that these violations continue to go down. Like I said, a little bit higher than we'd probably like them to be, but we are definitely working to make sure that we get to a better number one day. It does fluctuate, as you see that some areas, I think we had one a couple of weeks ago, that was almost virtually none in violations. Working with that, with what we're trying to do here in the city of Kenner, the sales tax report is in again, and I gotta tell you, this one's probably one of the best ones. We're up, sales taxes are up 7.8% of what it was last year, and we're 2.4 over, 2.4 million over this time from last year. That is incredible. We are nearing that number, what we had to borrow from the general fund. We are slowly putting that back. We probably won't reach it, we'll probably be very clear, very close to that number, I'm sorry, by July 1st, but we probably won't reach it. But I think this is really good. This shows that we are definitely moving forward in the city of Kenner. You will see that there's some things for economic development in first reading, and I'd rather hold those comments till next council meeting about economic development with the positions that we're putting in. But as you all know, we have an Economic Development Board that is working hard. We have an Economic Development Coordinator, and we're taking that next step with economic development, the things we'll talk about in my comments before the next council meeting. All those things make a difference with what we're doing here, moving ahead with the city of Kenner, and making a difference in our sales tax. I say it at each and every one of the civic associations that we go to with the district council people, if we keep increasing sales tax, we never have to ask for anything else. And I believe, and I know, that that is what our people want in the city of Kenner, more sales tax. We've cut more ribbons probably under this administration, along with this council, than has been seen before. We've got more occupational licenses opening up, and it's, the result is the sales tax numbers I keep giving you all at, I guess, every other council meeting by the time they come in. Any questions? Thank y'all. Thank you for your help and cooperation.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. That will conclude the consent agenda this evening, and just, Councilman Carroll has joined us.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Council members, please vote.
One more vote? No? Mr. Chairman, motion passes 7-0. Under the public appearance agenda this evening, we have item nine, public hearings for final passage. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution making application to the State Bond Commission for consent and authority to issue, sell, and deliver certificates of indebtedness of the city of Kenner and the total aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $1,750,000, setting forth the security therefor, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Councilman Carroll, did you have your light on? Okay. Mr. Wetzel, would you give us some comments on this, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Basically, what this is, is refinancing the ordinance. Well, in 1998, we approached the council to seek permission to merge with the fire retirement system. This ordinance here just refinances what we have left of that loan at a, roughly a 2% less interest rate. It would go from seven to hopefully five, saving the city 12.5 a year and $125,000 over the life of the loan, 10 years. So it's actually not increasing any time, it's not increasing any monies, it's just refinancing what we have left.
And a savings.
And a savings, yes, sir.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I don't have a screen here to...
Yes.
Anyone wishing to speak?
No one's wishing to speak. I'm sorry, I accidentally sent it to a vote, I didn't realize.
That's okay. Just wanted to make certain. Okay. Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Council members, please vote.
Mr. President, motion passes 7-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,529, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Lighthill Enterprises of Ohio, LLC, to supply signed poles, brackets, and miscellaneous signed supplies on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 19-6476, and an amount not to exceed $30,000 annually for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Hayes. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,530, an ordinance approving an agreement with Han Enterprises Incorporated to remove and replace Little Tykes play equipment at Greenlawn Hot Lot, and an amount not to exceed $13,296 for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 12,531, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Allstate Window and Signing Company to remove and replace windows at the Hispanic Resource Center for the city of Kenner in the amount of $5,215, in accordance with telephone bid number T-19-2956 for the Community Development Department.
Part of me just wants to say "who," but anyway. Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 12,532, an ordinance accepting the responsive bid received from BLD Services, LLC, in the amount of $619,040 for the Kenner-Hanson City Sewer Lift Station improvements for LS 4103 Firehouse Road Sewer Force Main Replacement Project in accordance with sealed bid number 19-6471 for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Ms. Foshee, do you have some comments, please?
Hello? Yes, we are excited to report that this came in 35% under budget, and the funding source for this particular project is the DEQ Revolving Loan Fund and CDBG grant. There are no city capital outlay funds in this project.
Thank you. Councilman Carroll?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Foshee, for that. I guess this question is for the director in Public Works. In this particular project for the substation, obviously, we all know last week, we had the downpour, which only God can control that, and most people understand when it's like that. It's like your drain, when the water's coming down, it only can take so much. But that being said, will this particular project support the area, which I'm gonna call the Pollock back of the track that I'm familiar with, but Hanson, Pollock, Salvador, Centany? Will this address the issues with the drainage there?
Well, this is a wastewater lift station, so it's not going to have any effect on your drainage per se, and it's taking the wastewater generated north of Airline and just south of the terminal. So that's the area, and there won't be any increase in capacity. This is a replacement. The lift station was already upgraded a couple of years ago, so this is just replacement of the force main.
Yes, so, and that is a perfect segue for my next question. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Dennis and Ms. Foshee for that, because we were able to communicate about certain things and make sure the barricades were up, make sure people were not riding down, also down Williams Boulevard, because that, between the tracks and Lord, I mean, excuse me, Reverend Richard Wilson, that is always a bad spot, but the police and Public Works, they were able to get out there and stop the traffic for anything. But I would, and the conversations that we had addressing to try to support or alleviate some of the issues we had, I like to meet with you out there to address certain things, maybe, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but I do know when I see a lot of water in the street, and the people in the area understands that, and there are some people who homes are not elevated, and they always suffer when that happens. Not blaming anybody, but we, maybe there could be some things that we can do to help support that. I mean, there have been conversations as it relates to things that are going on at the airport, how the water is going in, could we reroute the water, maybe a smaller type substation, all of those things, but I would like to meet with you out there, and also, Mr., you know, the administration and somebody, to have that conversation and see what we can do. So...
Yes.
I will be reaching out to you in your office and everyone else to try to schedule something to have that conversation.
Look forward to it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Ms. Strider. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 12,533, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Kenworth of South Louisiana, LLC, in an amount not to exceed $348,260 for the purchase of one combination sewer cleaner vacuum truck in accordance with sealed bid number 19-6474 for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Hayes. Ms. Foshee, do you have any comments, please?
I think we discussed this a little bit at the last council meeting, it's had, well, at the budget hearing, we discussed the fact that we do not have enough vac trucks. We basically have two. One is Veolia's, one is ours, both are broken. We kind of have one we're holding together with baling wire and chewing gum. So this one will take about three months to build and will bring much-needed capacity to the city.
Thank you. Seeing no, Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and Ms. Foshee, you're right. We had that conversation. I got kind of confused about actually, how many do we have, and which one is operable? Is it Veolia's, is it ours, or none? So...
Well, and frankly, I had that conversation, confusion too. I felt like we had three shells, in some moments we had three trucks, in some moments we had two trucks. What I think is happening is we have one truck that is never gonna be fixed, two trucks that are currently broken, both of which will be fixed, and the third one should be brand-new. So ultimately, if we repaired all of the available vehicles, we would have three. We think we're ultimately gonna repair at least one and have two. So it's either two or three, definitely two. That's as good as I can get on the math.
Well, that's more than what I had last at the budget hearing, so I have a little bit more understanding. Okay, so we're going in that direction, and you did say it will be another, for the new one, it will be a month?
Three months.
Three months.
They, all of these are custom built, so they're building it, it'll be here in three months.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Hayes. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15F is summary ordinance number 12,534, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from New Light Electrical Wholesalers to supply streetlight poles and accessories in accordance with sealed bid number 19-6480, and an amount not to exceed $150,000 annually for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Segura. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15G is a resolution ratifying the lease agreement with Three Veterans Boulevard, LLC, for the use of a portion of Veterans Memorial Boulevard right-of-way in accordance with ordinance number 10,599.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan. Ms. Rousseau, would you expound on these, please?
Yes, I'm happy to, Councilman. So this legislation, in addition to the three other ordinances that are after, that follow this one, are related to an ordinance that the council adopted back in 2013. I apologize, I think I told you all in the agenda meetings this morning, it was 2014. It's actually June 6th of 2013, the council adopted an ordinance that authorized the city to negotiate with property owners along Veterans Boulevard for the use of our right-of-way. Some of the dealerships along Veterans Boulevard have been utilizing the city's property for years without payment of just compensation to the city, and what these leases do is they, they give the city recurring revenue. So we have, this one in particular is with the gentleman and the company that owns US Park, which is at the end of Veterans Boulevard, close to the St. Charles Parish line. We had the property appraised, and they are paying us roughly $2 per square foot for their use of city property. So it's, again, it's good for the city because it's recurring revenue. We will get these payments on an annual basis. It tracks our fiscal year. I believe that these four leases on the agenda generate about $39,000, a little bit over $39,000 for the city, and in fiscal year 2018-19, so the current fiscal year, $75,000, over $75,000 was paid, and then we anticipate in 2019, 2020 fiscal year, that we'll get close to $100,000 from these right-of-way leases. So this is a very good thing for the city.
And that money goes to...
That money in accordance with the ordinance adopted by the council in 2013, it goes to beautification along Veterans Boulevard.
And if you said that, I apologize, I just... Councilman Carroll, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. President, Attorney. Thank you for that information, and it's good that now we've established ownership of that, and a couple of things that always comes up with the different people, residents of the Veteran Heights and Susan Park, certain sections, now that it is starting to expand, and it's gonna have a whole different look sooner or later, about the possibility of adding sidewalks along Veterans. So if we own it, that is a possibility for us to also put in sidewalks on certain sections of it, and there are a number of bus stops for the children, and I have to get the exact spot to be able to put something to identify children at a bus stop, some kind of pad or something also for them. So those are the type things, once this goes through, to be able to talk about seeing where would the best fit be for the, obviously, the bus stops are gonna identify itself, but the sidewalks, to see exactly how we can instill that.
So I think the administration can address the bus stops, Councilman.
Yes.
These leases do not include sidewalks or driveways, because those are put in and required by our code of ordinances. So these leases exclude driveways and sidewalks, they are only for the grassy portions of the right-of-way that these businesses are utilizing to display their merchandise, such as, you know, vehicles, so it doesn't include sidewalks.
Right. And being, you know, the person on the council during that time, 2013, I remember the conversations, part of the conversations, we also addressed that as far as the support from District 1, to be able to support that project, to add it in certain areas. So this was a good segue into it, to now bring that back up, to be able to talk about that with the administration, how we go forward. School is out now, so there won't be any bus stops, but either between the mayor or Ms. Foshee, you said that they wanted to address the bus stops or the...
There may be grants from the RTA, I think I heard Ms. Foshee talking about that, but the mayor.
From the Regional Transit Association? Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Zahn?
Yes, I think we can do some matching grants with RTA with the sidewalks. That's absolutely one thing we need to look at. I think we also need to look at making, I wanted to talk to you the other day about this, and Councilman Segura, because obviously, we have to use this only on veterans. Sorry, guys. Looking at your district, looking at Councilman Segura's district, let's make it look like Jefferson Parish. It looks really, really nice in Jefferson Parish. This is how Jefferson Parish does it, now that this has become a reality. I'd like to work with you two to see what we can do. Sidewalks, of course, I think that's important, but try to get some of those matching grants on that, but let's make Veterans Boulevard in the city of Kenner look like a continuation of Jefferson Parish's neutral grounds. Now, of course, some of ours on is wide, because they're covering canals, too. We're covering canals, too, but I mean, the way they, the oak there is, they're covering more of arid wood grass. There's lots of things we can do. One of the council people brought up today, the palm trees, we probably need to start addressing that, although people love palm trees, they're out of control in District 1. They're probably out of control in District 2. I think that's where you were talking about, Councilman Brannigan, the entry sign into the city of Kenner, which is 2. Let's get together as this starts to come in, let's put all of our brains together, the mayor's office, one and two, of course, if the at-larges want to get involved in that, and see what we can do to make everything look aesthetically pleasing, because we need to, and also for some safety and convenience things, which will be your sidewalks. I'd like to match that money with RTA, instead of using all this money just for sidewalks.
Right, and, you know, that sounds fantastic, and I guess we will benefit and appreciate your experience with the parish, to be able to bring some of the, you know, to be able to work through some of the things that you have dealt with there.
When I came into Jefferson Parish, the continuation of Kenner...
Yes.
Let's go reverse, looked terrible in unincorporated District 4, and I was always told, well, I was told when I came in, Ms. Foshee can tell you this, I was told a lot that, well, it's not wide enough, you can't do this, you can't do that. Well, that's bold, because what we did was, we went back and we, on the concrete, we did brick on the concrete if we have to. I think your median's a wide enough to do some of that. Yours should be, too, but we can make it look like unincorporated Jefferson Parish, especially District 4 unincorporated.
Yes, and...
So we'll use that.
You know, you mentioned about the palm trees, the residents of the Lincoln Manor subdivision, they love the palm trees. Once, the mistake that we made, and mostly my fault, we put it on the side with the wires, which obviously, when they grow up, you got a problem. So now, we're not doing that anymore, we only put it on the side, and the co-directors can know that, and so I'm only gonna be on the side where there are no wires. Second mistake, literally, when I first got on the council, we put some palm trees on Williams Boulevard. Now, the ladies in that committee, they got all over me, because that is not conducive for the area, because it has affected us also with the ability sometimes to secure movies. The area itself has a nice fit, but palm trees just throws it into another area. So that is part of the conversation, to probably remove those palm trees, maybe move them by the volleyball court or somewhere that's, I don't know, but obviously, yes, that is part of it also to do a better job.
You gotta be careful with the palm trees, too, because sometimes they carry disease.
Yes.
And if you start putting them by other stuff, it starts to kill the other plants. So we probably need to get all that checked, but I'd have no problem just removing the palm trees and sending them to the landfill, because it's not, you know, it's just, it's a problem, and they always, there are a lot of upkeep. I mean, they are definitely a lot of upkeep.
Yeah, and if we remove them, I don't know, maybe we can put them at the end of, by the Lake Pontchartrain for filler, for the part that erasing, erasing, so...
That sounds good.
Maybe that is something to do, but yes, I agree, one, they should go with something more conducive to the area, to ensure that it maintains that period look, and to be able to increase our financial for other people coming in. So we look forward to that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
I think we have a speaker, Mr. President.
I see that. I was gonna give the floor to Ms. Alessandro. Go ahead, please. Councilman will get to you in a second. Yes, ma'am, please state your name and address for the record.
I just have a couple of questions about what you guys are contemplating doing here. Does this mean that, from what I'm understanding, a car dealership can now park all their cars between the sidewalk and the street and be able to park those there? Is that, is this pretty much what this is allowing them to do?
They're already doing that, Ms. Alessandra.
Right, but isn't it illegal to do that currently?
Yeah, well, yes, so now they have to pay us to use our right-of-way, but many of them do not use the right-of-way, but those that do use the right-of-way will be subject to this ordinance, and they will have to pay.
But it's current, what they're doing right now, they're doing it, but it's, they're doing it illegally.
They're doing it through a lease, no, it's not...
No, what they're doing, I'm sorry, I'm saying what they're doing today, they're doing it, but they're doing it illegally. Is that correct?
Yes, it violates the code, yes.
Okay. So my question is, is just to think about this, because the reason it's illegal, I don't know why it was made illegal in the beginning, but I'm sure there was a reason. And I don't think it looks good, and especially like what the mayor's saying, if we want to try to continue making veterans look like Jefferson Parish, I'm wondering, does Jefferson Parish allow this? And my real concern is, does this open up kind of a gateway to other businesses to be able to do this, like anybody who wants to do it for any purpose? And like the car dealership that's coming on West Esplanade, are they gonna be able to now apply to do this and then have cars all along West Esplanade, just like anybody, anywhere who wants to do it? So although this might be a good thing in this case, you know, maybe because it's located all the way on the end of Veterans where nobody really goes, I would just ask y'all to, I'm not saying I'm against it, but I'm just saying, can you really consider all of the ramifications, ramifications, and then make your decision? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. President, may I...
Councilman Carroll?
Hey, Ms. Alessandra, thank you for coming up, and listen, obviously, I realize, and we all realize, this is in District 1, but it is the responsibility for all of us to ensure that the city of Kennedy looks as pristine as veterans or Metairie. So we all have an opportunity to have input into it, to make sure. Those were great comments. Those were great comments. Once we have this in place, they're going to be able to pick or choose if they want to be able to still do it. If they choose not to and they can't do it, then they won't be part of the lease agreement will be different. If they choose they want to, then they're going to have to, you know, pay to be able to do it. And will it look better, will it look not? I think eventually, we're evolving to see what's look, you know, the look for veterans, and I'm going to say from Williams all the way to Loyola, that is important for us because I envision in 20 years, that area to change a lot. And we want to get in front of it as much as we can with the number of hotels that are coming, businesses like that. So Veterans is an important corridor for us to ensure with the flyover coming and different things. So please feel free, if you see different things happening, you know, contact either one of us, your councilperson, myself, the at-larges, the administration, about things that you see, because that's how we know when something is, you know, we know by other people supporting things that can help in, you know, make it look more, look better for us. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Branigan?
On the palm tree issue, the deal with palm trees is the freeze that we had two winters ago, not this past winter, the one before, knocked out a lot of palm trees in Kenner, and that's why we having so many issues with it. I lost five or six in my backyard because of it. The car dealership issue with, on Veterans Highway, where they're parking the cars now, these funds would beautify Veterans Highway. And on the car dealership you mentioned on West Esplanade, from the drawings, they have a sidewalk, and they don't have enough grass to be able to park a car out in front of that, you know, on a sidewalk on grass, it would be in their parking lot.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Segur?
Thank you. Well, thank Councilman Branigan for expounding a little bit what I was just going to answer with the question from Ms. Alessandra on the West Esplanade parking of the auto complex that's going to be built. Correct. As he said, there is, it's a different scenario there. The servitude is not as wide as we're talking about on Veterans. So they cannot physically put a car between the sidewalk and the curb of the street. There's just not enough room. So that cannot happen. But the veterans' corridor is a different thing. And it's not just an automobile dealership issue. This is all up and down Veterans, where you have retail strip centers that are using the servitude for parking. So this is not, let's just not keep bashing the car dealership, let's look at it up and down. We have strip centers, restaurants, all sorts of businesses that have been using the servitude to have additional parking, which sounds like a good thing because that means their business is doing good and they need that parking. So if we get a lease with them to bring in money to use our land and then use that money to beautify the look of Veterans, it seems like it's a win-win-win-win and a win for all of us. So let's just not bash something that doesn't sound right. Let's look at it as something good. Thank you.
Ms. Russell?
I just wanted to follow up on that as well. Oftentimes, this is for new developments as well. So you have to comply with landscape ordinances or our landscape ordinance as well as parking requirements. So we have had developments where they lease the right-of-way because they are installing landscaping within the right-of-way to comply with our landscape ordinance. So they do that, and then they have to pay, you know, to use the right-of-way. So it is not just car dealerships. It is also for beautification. It's for meeting landscape requirements, the landscape ordinance and parking requirements as well.
Thank you. Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Russell, I just had a question regarding the length of the term of the lease.
The lease automatically renews every year. So it's not a lease that has a term of four years. It's automatically renewed unless terminated by either party. So it goes on in perpetuity, provided they pay us, obviously, and neither one of us breach the lease and get into any issues, you know, contractual issues. But it continues year to year.
We can opt out at the end of any year that we...
We'd have to give them notice, yes, sir, in accordance with the lease terms, but yes, we could.
Okay. And that's the same for all these measures, fifteen G, H, I, and J?
It's all the same lease, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Mayor Son?
I think it's important to point out what Councilman Segur said, that I guess you can look up and down Veterans, and you really don't notice that some of the dedicated parking spots are actually on our right-of-way. So a lot of residents probably think that's the property, owner's property. It's incorrect. That happens in unincorporated Jefferson Parish. I can think of a very big grocery chain that that happens with, numerous others, and also a lot of businesses here in the City of Kenner. So I think everybody needs to keep that in mind, and Stacy, keep that in mind when you're looking out there. A lot of people have actually encroached on our property and put parking spots there as all this came more and more noticeable to Jefferson Parish and the City of Kenner and other municipalities that this had to be done because they're taking our property. We don't mind it. We're all about increasing business, but somebody has to pay for it. So I think that's what you're a little bit clearer on, the point you were making, I totally agree, that's a very valid point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Kenny?
I just wanted to clarify. So the legislation in 2013, did that only deal with veterans or was that studies right-of-ways throughout the entire City of Kenner?
It's limited to Veterans Boulevard.
So it's only limited to Veterans Boulevard. And so if on West Esplanade they wanted to do that, that we don't have current legislation for them to allow to do that? Thank you.
That's correct.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussion, we have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fifteen H is a resolution ratifying the lease agreement with Twenty-third Avenue Greeley LLC for the use of a portion of the Veterans Boulevard Memorial, Veterans Memorial Boulevard right-of-way in accordance with ordinance number ten thousand five hundred ninety-nine.
Motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fifteen I is a resolution ratifying the lease agreement with M.E. Walker LLC for the use of a portion of the Veterans Boulevard, Veterans Memorial Boulevard right-of-way in accordance with ordinance number ten thousand five hundred ninety-nine.
Motion by Councilmember Segur, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fifteen J is a resolution ratifying the lease agreement with Pinnacle Realty of Louisiana LLC for the use of a portion of the Veterans Memorial Boulevard right-of-way in accordance with ordinance number ten thousand five hundred ninety-nine.
We have a motion by Councilmember Segur, seconded by Councilmember Hayes. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance adopting the capital budget for the City of Kenner for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Item sixteen B is an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Article Three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kenner, creating the Department of Economic Development in accordance with Section four point three-two of the city charter and further designating the functions of the department and the department head. Item sixteen C is an ordinance authorizing the administration utilize existing Jefferson Parish contract number fifty-five dash zero 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 one seven zero eight seven with Truck and Transportation Equipment Company Incorporated to purchase vehicles on an as-needed basis not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars annually for the Departments of Fleet Management, Fire, and Police. Item sixteen D is an ordinance approving the utilization of state contract number four four zero 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 one six four three five for the purchase of tires, tubes, and related services on an as-needed basis from the Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. Item sixteen E is an ordinance awarding request for proposal number nineteen dash sixty-four eighty-five for emergency feeding large events for the Department of Emergency Management. Item sixteen F is an ordinance awarding request for proposal number nineteen dash sixty-four eighty-six for emergency feeding small events for the Department of Emergency Management. Item sixteen G is an ordinance awarding request for proposal number nineteen dash sixty-four eighty-eight for disaster services and support for the Department of Emergency Management. Item sixteen H is an ordinance ratifying the proposal for commercial package liability insurance at a cost not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars for the period of July first, two thousand nineteen through July first, two thousand twenty. Item sixteen I is an ordinance ratifying the proposal from Safety National Casualty Company with AM best rating of A excellent for excess workers' compensation insurance for the period of July first, two thousand nineteen through July first, two thousand twenty. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilman Branigan?
Just wanted to let everyone know that my Put Kenner First Plan, had a friend of mine call me and tell me he saw the ad and likes the idea, and instead of buying his twenty-two-hundred-dollar refrigerator at Home Depot in Elmwood, he bought it at Home Depot in Kenner. And twenty-two-hundred times our rate of tax, we made fifty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents on that transaction. So hopefully, we have about forty thousand other people doing the same thing. Thank you.
Refrigerators are excluded from that, Councilman.
Yeah.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and good job there, Councilman. Two things. One, as it relates to today, is the music of the parks. So anyone that has time to come out, bring your family and friends, the weather should be fantastic for that. Two, and Ms. Foshee or the mayor, we've gotten numerous, I'm not going to say complaints, but considerations and wanting to know what the, on the other side of the levee, that walkway, that pier, whatever you want to call it, that is horrendous. And since my tenure on the council, there's been all kinds of stuff said because of this, because of that, who owns it, who doesn't own it. But, you know, all the great things that y'all are doing now for Rivertown, that is one of the most important pieces because people always walk to the levee. And when they look out there and see that, it's raccoon-infested, it's this, it's that. So what is our, what is our plans and who do we have to talk to to start addressing that?
So that's one of those things, that there's more urban legend than fact. It was damaged during Katrina. We are told that the Corps of Engineers or the levee board or someone would not let us tear it down. And so we've looked at trying to get permission to repair it, and we are told, I'm told that we were told, we can't get permission from those same people to repair it. We can neither remove it nor repair it. That can't actually be the answer, right? So at this point, what we're trying to do, a couple of things. One, actually determine what it would cost to repair it, because it doesn't do us any good to get a permission to repair it if we can't afford it, find out if there are funding sources out there, or if it is, in fact, something that can be removed and cannot be repaired because it's an amazing piece of, you know, an attraction for the City of Kenner if we could actually get that repaired. So if we can get it repaired and get funding to get it repaired, that is what we'll do. If not, we will figure out how to get it removed. Right now, it is secure, though we have to constantly check that because people will get out there and remove the security barricades that are around it.
Well, I have heard the same story, just like you have heard, just recently here. I've been hearing it for years, who's this, who's that? But who actually built, who, what business, what company, who's responsible for building it in the first place? Was it the city? Was it the state? Was it the levee district?
I can't give you an actual answer on that. I will find out some information for you, but there was a time back in the day when things were built without actually asking permission of the right people. And now, of course, we try not to do that. So it's unclear to me whether all the proper processes were followed to build it in the first place, which is part of the reason there's the challenge to get it repaired because the very people who would say, what are you doing, digging into the levee and putting this thing out into the river, those same people don't really want us to repair it, but it's a different group of people who would have to actually give us permission to tear it down. So that is, it is not falling off our list. We are very well aware of that. I just need a little bit more information, and I will assure you that we will dig into it further and get information directly to you.
Yes, and I appreciate that. And your comments first about, you know, the time and the period for the City of Kenner where we did things without, we didn't have, as Mr. Mohammed can attest to as someone who's been in the City of Kenner for a long time, and the many of the men and women who are my mentors, they just did stuff. So now, when Mr. Mohammed and his men, we have to talk to these, you know, founders of the city, they don't want to hear that because I did this fifty years ago and I didn't have a problem. So you can understand our conversation, you know, you have to be respectful and let them know. But that is the mentality in South Kenner because that's where it all started at. They weren't cold, they weren't this, they weren't that. So now, we obviously got to find out. But we have to because I know you say that it's secure, but it is secure as the individual who wants to get there.
It's intermittently secure. We continue to secure it, we check it constantly, but obviously, between visits, somebody can get in there and pry a board off, or remove a barricade, or climb over a fence. So if you're determined to get out there, you could, but it is very dangerous, and we're doing what we can to prevent that.
Yes. And most people who are, you know, over twenty-five, they don't, they're not going to try. But it's that younger group that, who are daredevils and who don't believe nothing can happen to them, they are the group that normally goes out there to try to impress their girlfriends or whatever they want to do, to go do that. So those are the ones, and if we are to, you know, we just ensure that, along with the East Jefferson Levee District, to ensure that the safety precautions in place, that's going to help us until we get to the point. But I look forward to the information that you're going to be sharing with us so I can share with everyone who always asks about, what are we going to do with it? So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Segur?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to, again, thank Councilman Branigan for his promotion to, you know, spend that extra money in Kenner and realize that that is District Two. So thank you for allowing him to come in my district and spend their money. We'll use it wisely.
Councilman Hayes?
I would like to thank the city administration and volunteers from the community for sponsoring our Memorial Day celebration yesterday in Reef Lane. It was really a wonderful event, and I think everybody that attended was really impressed with what happened here in these very chambers yesterday. Also, the Dawnbusters Kiwanis, we had a busy day yesterday, sponsored a reading program and awards program at two of our schools, Chateau Elementary and also Kenner Discovery. So thank you, Dawnbusters Kiwanis. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Carroll?
One more thing I forgot. On Sunday, the City of Kenner, along with the Lupus Foundation, is having an event at the Rosemary Minor Totlot, and it is a, it is a event to address the challenges that many of our family and friends have with lupus, an opportunity to hear from some of, for them personally and for, to get updates on the ability of the medical field trying to deal with lupus. One of the things I learned that I didn't know, lupus mostly affects females more than males, and it's more internal for the females as for the men is external. Visibly, you can see it. So until this sort of affects them. So if you're not doing anything on Sunday between three and six, I believe, please stop by and ask support to one that may be in your family or someone that you may know. If you just want to stop by, we would appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clark?
Item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and a motion to reconsider or remove from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Loyal Drive, Fifth District, forty-seven years. You've got something to say, Councilman Branigan?
One minute.
One minute? Well, I covered all, man, that's no problem. I understand. I want to talk, I want to revisit the conversation we had in here at the special meeting concerning short-term rentals. This should not be difficult to put this legislation on the table and pass it simply because when this council got elected and y'all took these seats, you all took an oath to uphold the laws of the City of Kenner, the Parish of Jefferson, State of Louisiana, and the United States of America. So that is, it's not, it don't have anything to do with how many people are for it and how many people are against it. It's the laws that are on the books for the City of Kenner, and when it comes to upholding the laws that you all took an oath to do, you should all be on board in upholding those laws.
Thank you, Council Chairman. Mr. Taft, first of all, the fire station, a lot has to go on with the fire station. We have gotten to that point. Construction will start in February of next year. I threw this to the news media, I think, two weeks ago. Construction will start in February of next year, should be completed by December of 2020, but as you know, the fire station was an issue with some people, so we did get held up a little bit. So, when things, people are welcome to ask questions, but when the questions are asked and it becomes derogatory and it becomes negative, we get caught up in defending ourselves instead of moving, pushing it forward. So, we did get delayed. I think everybody's okay with it now, I believe. We've moved forward with that. We will start that construction in February after all the plans are done. The architect has to come in, engineering has to be done. All that should have been done already, but it couldn't be done because of the issues that were arising over that. As for the economic development person that we pick, that person's been picked, absolutely. I totally agree. Ashley, that person's in the audience. I'm going to send that person to talk to you one-on-one after this meeting. I'd rather reserve the person coming before this council. The council's been informed of it in agenda meetings. Where are we going with it? The council doesn't pick the person. It's a contract that we're doing, so I'm going to pick that. All the council has to do is form the department. Why the need for the department? Well, first of all, community development's a little busy. It keeps us very busy throughout the city of Kenner, and Councilman Carroll knows that because it's a lot in District 1, but throughout the city. We are going to make some adjustments throughout some departments. I think you'll be very happy with the end product. We need the department. That department needs to work very closely with Visit Kenner. Visit Kenner, as you know, I broke off from JEDCO and JCVB. They continue to assist the city of Kenner, but we broke off to eventually have our own separate, Visit Kenner's not one of our departments, but it's still an entity within the city that's working for the good of the city of Kenner. So, no one had a problem before working with two other departments, JEDCO and JCVB. I don't see why we would have a problem forming our own department here and also an extra entity, Visit Kenner, which has been formed, which are those departments that take the place of other departments throughout the parish. So, if you just give us a little time, and I think you'll be very impressed with the person I'll send to you after this meeting. Give us a little time, you'll see the presentation will make at the next council meeting. It probably won't be the only thing on that agenda, obviously, we'll have the budget too, so we will be here for a little bit explaining both of those things.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Taft, thank you for coming up. The second part of your response, I totally agree. The person has to have that institutional knowledge to be able to ensure, because this is important for the city. The first part, I'm going to disagree with the mayor and say that I was adamantly against always that $75,000 that we gave to JEDCO. Well, I thought you said that everybody didn't have a problem when we were in that. I've always felt...
No, no, no. I wasn't talking about the council.
Oh, okay.
It seems that there was no big, look, I was never crazy about that either. I agree with you, and the first day that I came in, I wasn't crazy about it.
Right, you and I met...
I was not speaking about the, I was not speaking about this current council, nor you. I was speaking about, I don't hear anybody coming up in the past, maybe they did, but not recently, at least your tenure on the council. Have you heard anybody really push back on that that much?
No, I haven't.
Maybe they did, but I was not speaking about you or the council members. I was speaking about, as we tried to branch off and form departments that are taking the place of giving money to Jefferson Parish, I don't want that to be a problem now. Was not speaking about you.
Right, and you and I and the administration, you remember our conversation?
Absolutely, I totally agree with you.
I was totally clear about that from early on, and as it relates to Mr. Taft, I disagree with it going to community development for the same reason I disagree with it being with JEDCO, because we will never be able to get full support in Kenner if we are always a stepchild with another group. The person, the group that's their main function and only function should be for the city of Kenner. So, that is why, that was my big grief against the JEDCO, nothing against JEDCO, they still support us, but we were paying 75K and everybody else wasn't paying anything, and they pretty much was getting lots of the stuff that we were getting. So, you know, we're past that. JEDCO is still supportive to us, but now it is our responsibility to take care of the city of Kenner. So, thank you, Mr. Taft. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clark?
Item 18 is new business. We have none. Item 19 is unfinished business and a motion to reconsider or remove from a table position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Al Morella, 4260 East Laoyle Drive, 5th District, 47 years. You've got something to say, Councilman Brannigan?
One minute.
One minute? Well, I covered all, man. That's no problem. I understand. I want to talk, I want to revisit the conversation we had in here at the special meeting concerning short-term rentals. This should not be difficult to put this legislation on the table and pass it, simply because when this council got elected and y'all took these seats, you all took an oath to uphold the laws of the city of Kenner, the parish of Jefferson, state of Louisiana, and the United States of America. So, that is, it's not, it don't have anything to do with how many people are for it and how many people are against it. It's the laws that are on the books for the city of Kenner, and when it comes to upholding the laws that you all took an oath to do, you should all be on board in upholding those laws. Now, second item. It's been brought to my attention that in today's edition of The Advocate, I have not had an opportunity to read it yet, but it's my understanding that there's been litigation filed against the administration by our fire department, and injunctions and what have you. This is, whenever there's a problem, and I'm bringing this up for the record, because like I said, I'm not going to elaborate because I haven't had an opportunity to read it yet, but when we have a problem with any of our employees or any of our departments, the public has the right to know about it, so now I'm putting that on the record, and I will elaborate once I get more details on it, okay? Now, the conversation about the pier in South Kenner, okay, just a few minutes ago. The pier in North Kenner was rebuilt twice, and it was taken out by a hurricane, it was destroyed, it was rebuilt again using wooden pilings and using wood, and then it was taken out a second time, and now it's concrete and steel, and it's a beautiful pier. So, I suggest that whatever process we went through for that pier in Lake Town, we look at that process and try to do something with that pier in Rivertown. Now, I'm looking out here at the audience, and for about the last two months now, since we made this day permanent and this time permanent, it's funny how I don't see these people who came up here and lobbied for this time change and for this day, saying it gave people an opportunity to come. I haven't seen none of these individuals here since it was made permanent. I used to see them here every meeting when it was, you know, when it was, when it was on, going through a trial basis, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Morella.
Okay, that's all I have to say. Anybody got any comments, any questions?
Councilman Segura? Yes, Mr. Morella, obviously, everybody's schedules do change. I see Mr. Brown's back in our presence. We missed him for a long time, so even though our regular scheduled meetings were known to him, he missed them. The group that you're talking about sent us all a notice today apologizing for their not being able to come, but they're holding a function at their center for their residents, which they've invited us to come, and so that's why they're not here today. So, everybody has their issues. We don't hold Mr. Brown accountable for why he doesn't come, so we won't hold these folks either.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman McKinney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Morella. I appreciate you speaking. I will let you know that today was the last day of school for many students, and actually Jefferson Parish let out yesterday, so I actually did reach out to some of the student, to the kids or to the schools, and actually all schools of the Kenner, and let them know the dates of the meetings, and they were actually, were going to send home information for the students to come. But obviously, children who get off of school on Thursday don't want to come to a council meeting on Friday, so I did reach out to them and let them know, and hopefully they'll be coming, you know, on field trips and starting in September. And I just want to second, Mrs. Segura, that they are having an event, and they actually were planning on coming last week, and when I told, they were upset when I told them that we weren't actually having a council meeting, so they were very excited to come last week, unfortunately. We would not have been there.
Response now or next meeting, Councilman Brennan?
Next one, Mr. Morella. Your time is up.
Next meeting.
Mayor Zahn has the floor.
I think it's also important to realize it's Memorial Day weekend, so that might have a little something to do with it, and as usual, of course, what you said, Councilwoman McKinney and Councilman Segura, adding to that, summer months are usually slower, so I think you'll probably see the same thing with Thursday evenings, and I've noticed some Thursday evenings have been empty. I mean, like you said, Mr. Brown hasn't made a few of the Thursdays or Fridays, and there's been some other regulars, not you, Mr. Morella, but there's been some other regulars that have not been here on Thursday evening, so I think it's just the time of the year that we're going into. Anytime from April on, when you have festivities going on and obviously vacations, you're going to see a lighter impact at the council meetings, particularly during the day.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Brannigan?
If you think that these kids are going to come to council meetings during the summer, I want to have the crystal ball that you're looking into, because it's probably got the winning Powerball numbers in it too. Summertime, these kids are not thinking about school, council meetings, or anything, so it's going to be light during the summer.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Greg Taft?
My name is Greg Taft. Live at 3720 West Laoyle Drive in Kenner. I just have a couple of comments that I'd like to make and address the administration and appropriate people on, is, one, the new fire station, the property that we bought, I haven't seen anything being done on it and preparing it for the new station, and I don't, I just want to know, when is that going to start? Because I thought it would have already been started by now, since we, you know, already got the funding and everything from the state and what have you. The other thing I want to bring up is the ordinance is going to come up on the next meeting to add the new department, the economic department. I just want to say this about that. Number one, I don't think we really need to add another department. I think if you added to community development under Mike Entz, I think it could be better served that way. The other thing I'm concerned about, and I want to bring it up, is that this is going to be an important function for somebody, because it's going to determine what's going to happen to Kenner in the next five, 10, 15 years. I want y'all to look at and find a candidate, not some friend or not someone you know. Find someone that is in that field, that's got the experience to network with the businesses, network with the community, and knows what, how to contact businesses that are outstate. I know Mr. Brannigan has sent some things out of state, but he's not an expert, so he doesn't know how to get their attention. A true economic development person knows how to get attention and knows how to promote a state or a city, however you want to put it. That's the kind of person we need in that position. But again, I don't think we have to create a new department for it, because I think under the community development department with Mike Entz, I think he could work with the person, but basically, this person's going to be on her own. I mean, we understand that, but this person has to have the experience to do it, and that's really all I have to say, unless y'all have any questions.
Mayor Zahn, thank you, Mr. Taft. Mayor Zahn, you have the floor?
Thank you, Council Chairman. Mr. Taft, first of all, the fire station, a lot has to go on with the fire station. We have gotten to that point. Construction will start in February of next year. I threw this to the news media, I think, two weeks ago. Construction will start in February of next year, should be completed by December of 2020, but as you know, the fire station was an issue with some people, so we did get held up a little bit. So, when things, people are welcome to ask questions, but when the questions are asked and it becomes derogatory and it becomes negative, we get caught up in defending ourselves instead of moving, pushing it forward. So, we did get delayed. I think everybody's okay with it now, I believe. We've moved forward with that. We will start that construction in February after all the plans are done. The architect has to come in, engineering has to be done. All that should have been done already, but it couldn't be done because of the issues that were arising over that. As for the economic development person that we pick, that person's been picked, absolutely. I totally agree. Ashley, that person's in the audience. I'm going to send that person to talk to you one-on-one after this meeting. I'd rather reserve the person coming before this council. The council's been informed of it in agenda meetings. Where are we going with it? The council doesn't pick the person. It's a contract that we're doing, so I'm going to pick that. All the council has to do is form the department. Why the need for the department? Well, first of all, community development's a little busy. It keeps us very busy throughout the city of Kenner, and Councilman Carroll knows that because it's a lot in District 1, but throughout the city. We are going to make some adjustments throughout some departments. I think you'll be very happy with the end product. We need the department. That department needs to work very closely with Visit Kenner. Visit Kenner, as you know, I broke off from JEDCO and JCVB. They continue to assist the city of Kenner, but we broke off to eventually have our own separate, Visit Kenner's not one of our departments, but it's still an entity within the city that's working for the good of the city of Kenner. So, no one had a problem before working with two other departments, JEDCO and JCVB. I don't see why we would have a problem forming our own department here and also an extra entity, Visit Kenner, which has been formed, which are those departments that take the place of other departments throughout the parish. So, if you just give us a little time, and I think you'll be very impressed with the person I'll send to you after this meeting. Give us a little time, you'll see the presentation will make at the next council meeting. It probably won't be the only thing on that agenda, obviously, we'll have the budget too, so we will be here for a little bit explaining both of those things.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Taft, thank you for coming up. The second part of your response, I totally agree. The person has to have that institutional knowledge to be able to ensure, because this is important for the city. The first part, I'm going to disagree with the mayor and say that I was adamantly against always that $75,000 that we gave to JEDCO. Well, I thought you said that everybody didn't have a problem when we were in that. I've always felt...
No, no, no. I wasn't talking about the council.
Oh, okay.
It seems that there was no big, look, I was never crazy about that either. I agree with you, and the first day that I came in, I wasn't crazy about it.
Right, you and I met...
I was not speaking about the, I was not speaking about this current council, nor you. I was speaking about, I don't hear anybody coming up in the past, maybe they did, but not recently, at least your tenure on the council. Have you heard anybody really push back on that that much?
No, I haven't.
Maybe they did, but I was not speaking about you or the council members. I was speaking about, as we tried to branch off and form departments that are taking the place of giving money to Jefferson Parish, I don't want that to be a problem now. Was not speaking about you.
Right, and you and I and the administration, you remember our conversation?
Absolutely, I totally agree with you.
I was totally clear about that from early on, and as it relates to Mr. Taft, I disagree with it going to community development for the same reason I disagree with it being with JEDCO, because we will never be able to get full support in Kenner if we are always a stepchild with another group. The person, the group that's their main function and only function should be for the city of Kenner. So, that is why, that was my big grief against the JEDCO. Nothing against JEDCO, they still support us, but we were paying 75K and everybody else wasn't paying anything, and they pretty much was getting lots of the stuff that we were getting. So, you know, we're past that. JEDCO is still supportive to us, but now it is our responsibility to take care of the city of Kenner. So, thank you, Mr. Taft. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Brannigan?
Greg, the other thing too, by bringing these things in-house, we are saving money.
You're right, that's why I'm saying, if you brought it into Mike Entz's department, you still have the same, the same person that's going to be running it, that segment within the community development department, it's just that he doesn't, that person doesn't have to be a director.
Well, I guess the mayor answered that when he said that Mike Entz's department is pretty well-stretched right now.
He may be, because I know he's doing a lot, and I know he's working on getting a lot of grants and that sort of thing, but this individual really probably, if you got the right individual, I'm not so sure they would need a lot of supervision from Mike Entz, or, because remember, this person's going to know how to work with the businesses, work with the community, and make the models, work with the council, work with the administration,
Well, I would like the mayor to answer my questions, though, to respond to the questions I had. I'll start with, start with, why didn't KTV cover the council meeting?
The request that I had gotten, and we're checking that right now, was from one of the council people, was for two departments to be here, was planning and code enforcement. And those were present. This was a special council meeting. I mean, if there was a request sent to me for KTV, I'll have to go back and check that, but I remember that the request was for code and for the planning department to be here.
It seems like having KTV here for every council meeting would be routine. It just-
It seems like it to you, Mr. Brown, but especially, first of all, KTV is a, you know, it's an extra. We are filming council meetings that we know we should be at. That's not even mandated that we're supposed to film a council meeting. But of course, that council meeting was recorded. Correct, council clerk?
I'm sorry.
You didn't record it either?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, okay, so, I'm not going to point the finger at anybody, but I'm getting the finger pointed at me. But I would assume that council meetings are recorded in audio, but if that wasn't done either, that's something else we have to address, or the council has to address. But the two departments requested were planning and code. I'll go back and check if KTV was requested or not.
I am requesting the KTV cover all of the, it seems like they should. That just seems like a natural. I'm stunned that they weren't here. And the other question was about the two fire departments.
Hold on. Let me make it clear. No laws, no ordinances, nothing was broken. You do realize that?
I'm not claiming it was, Mr. Mayor. It just seems like-
I know, I know, but you're requesting something that's not mandated. So, I'm just making it clear to the public that it's not, nothing was broken. No law, no code was broken, no ordinance was broken.
I know. But this council is saying, and the administration, we want the public involved in the council meetings. We want the public to see what's going on. And then to not have KTV cover it, flies in the face of that. It's hot air, then, if you say we want the public to see what's going on, yet you don't have KTV cover it. But please, y'all get together, work something out, so KTV-
And just for the record, that was, as the council knows, that was a special council meeting. No vote was taken. There was only discussion. That could have been handled in a town hall meeting, which usually those aren't recorded. So, it was nothing different than a town hall meeting, except run by a council instead of the administration, or a district councilman.
Now, I think my other question had to do with the, with the two injunctions, or temporary restraining orders in the two lawsuits.
Look, I don't, I don't get into fake news. What I get into is down to the things that we have to do for our fire department to keep our residents safe. I'm not going to speak on things that are in litigation. And I mean, I think the best article that I've seen so far, or the best coverage, has been the Advocate, because it's a very balanced article from this morning. So, I want to thank Famon Roberts. I think he is the one that did that. And I want to thank the Advocate. That is not fake news. Some of the things that I've seen on Facebook, some of the things that I've seen in the media, has been fake news. That will continue to be my position on this. It's ridiculous how, you know, some members of the public think that the administration is always wrong if an employee has an issue. As this, and I'm going to call the fire chief up, because, and also yield it to legal, because I'm not going to jeopardize the city's position with pending litigation and say something wrong. But you got to give us a little more credit sometimes. And I know you're one of those people that are on the media sites that are making some comments, and that's fine, that you're right. But before you make those comments, I've always asked, talk to us first. You have my cell phone number. God knows you use it enough times for other things, and I'll respond to you immediately. But before you go on Facebook and just say things that are untrue, or are not informed of properly, you might want to do this, you and I, first. I will let the fire chief come up. I will let the fire chief make the comments that he needs to make on the fire department. I'll yield it to legal. I think Mr. Ed Rapiere, our Assistant City Attorney, did a fantastic job responding to the Advocate. Like I said, I think the Advocate reported it very fairly. And look, I want to compliment Mr. Geruso for admitting this has been going on for 30 years. So, I think you need to look at those types of things, and I have the article right here if you don't have it. For 30 years it's been going on. All of a sudden, with this new fire chief, it's a problem. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have the article, but that's one lawsuit. What about the other lawsuit? Are you denying there's another lawsuit with a restraining order?
But one, one question at a time. I mean, I can only move so quickly.
Pardon me, Mayor. Pardon me, Mr. Brown. Councilman Segura?
I'm calling a point of order.
Thanks.
We are discussing litigation that I think is beyond this point right now. We need to lead, yield to legal to give us guidance on whether we should be having discussion on a legal matter in this format right now. Richard, you know that. Legal?
Yes.
You can still tell us whether there is that second lawsuit.
Richard, I'm asking my legal something. I don't need her opinion from you.
I just want to know, is there a second lawsuit?
Mr. Brown?
There are two lawsuits, yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
And we did make comments to the Advocate. The deputy city attorney, Mr. Ed Rapiere, spoke to Famon Roberts yesterday. We were in Baton Rouge. And I think the fire chief, Mr. Morris, would like to get up and answer some of your questions, hopefully give some information, give some of the facts. I think that we can discuss certain things. I don't know that we're going to discuss everything, Mr. Brown.
I understand.
It will pan out in, in the courts.
I understand. But I do resent having the mayor say that was fake news when it's not fake news.
Well, hold on. I'm still got the-
Absolutely, that second lawsuit.
He was talking about the social media aspect, Mr. Brown.
And let me-
Did you call him down to, we can cap-
Hold on.
My conversation with my legal?
Hold on.
Well, okay. I mean, I had a point of order, trying to get an explanation, and Mr. Brown is still arguing with administration and legal, I haven't truly got the answer to what I'm trying to get to.
Which is, Councilman Segura, did I not answer your question?
I, you were trying to, when you were interrupted. So, what I'm clearly trying to understand is, since there are these two legal actions, which is okay, they're public, that's why they're in the news. But the steps that we're taking to go forth with that, is that something that should be discussed in this arena right now?
We are prepared to have a limited discussion in this arena right now. Yes, sir. Mr. Rapiere, he, like I said, he gave comments to the media yesterday. There's an article in the paper today. So, we are prepared to make limited comments. I think, I think we're comfortable with that. Your legal department is comfortable with that, limited comments, to set some, you know, facts out there, which, which may already be in the pleadings, which are a public record.
Okay. And that's, that's where I'm trying to get to. I don't have an issue with our legal department giving information. I'm just not comfortable, even maybe with the fire chief speaking, because I want the legal to give guidance on that.
Right. And I totally agree with you. I think legal should speak. I think the fire chief should speak on his limited, I've let, I've allowed the fire chief to speak to the media on limited comments, very limited comments. And I think the fire chief needs to defend his fire department. This is not an act against the fire department. This is what the association, I use that term loosely, has, has attacked the administration with, and has filed a lawsuit against the administration. And as for Mr. Brown, who made a comment and then ran from the podium, I will say this. I said it's fake news from other media outlets and on Facebook on the comments that are being made. I did not say that he has fake news. Now, if he feels that he's guilty of it, if the shoe fits, wear it.
All right. So, at this point, Mr. Russell, you're going to allow Assistant City Attorney to-
Yes, Councilman, you're correct. Typically, this is the subject for something that will be discussed in executive session. I think that we are prepared to have a limited discussion. Mr. Rapiere will speak on the matter.
Okay.
And we will not speak far into it, because it is ongoing litigation, and it is the, and it's the city's normal practice not to comment on ongoing litigation. However, certain things that Mr. Brown has said is factually incorrect. There are not two injunctions against the city. There is one in the, in the suit concerning having firefighters work out of class, or work out of position, in which case the city has been ordered not to force firefighters to work in a different class. I made comments to the Advocate yesterday, and I stand by those comments, and we're not going to get any further into it than what was said in the Advocate yesterday. As to the other suit, which is a mandamus suit, there is no injunction there. So, the statement that the city has two injunctions against it is factually and legally incorrect. What has occurred in that case is what the city has said it is always going to do. The city, under state law, has a duty to appoint, when there is a vacancy in the fire chief's position, that has a duty to appoint a new fire chief within 60 days of the vacancy, from a qualified list. And that's all the court told us to do. Within 60 days of the vacancy, appoint from the qualified list. There are issues in front of the Fire Civil Service Board, which will be heard on Tuesday evening, as to whether there is or is not a qualified list. And that's where we are. I don't know what Mr. Brown is talking about, about a second injunction. There is no injunction. The court has not ordered the city to do it in, in that mandamus case. The court has not ordered the city to do anything that the city said it wasn't going to do in the first place. So, currently, the city, we have Chief Morris acting in the position of fire chief because of the way the fire structure, fire hierarchy is structured. He is chief of administration over suppression. And we, Chief Bergeron resigned the position, so there is no fire chief. The next person in line, at least until there is a permanent appointment, would be the chief of administration over suppression. That is where we are. That's what we told the court the other day. And the court said, fine. Appoint, as the law says, by June 15th, from a qualified list. The question is still whether there is a qualified list, and that's to be determined by the Fire Civil Service Board, for which we will talk to. And we, there is a Fire Civil Service Board hearing or meeting on Tuesday evening. And other than that, it's ongoing litigation, and the city does not normally comment on ongoing litigation.
All right. That's where I'm at, and this is where I think this conversation needs to end, until we get more. I know everyone wants to comment, but I'm getting very concerned on the direction of these comments, both from the audience and from administration, that we're on shaky ground here, folks.
Councilman Segura, you know, I appreciate your position. But I think it's imperative that, for the fire department, he already knows, he knows how far to go with this. But to represent the fire department correctly, I think the fire chief should at least speak. Now, of course, I'm not the council chairman, you decide that, but it's okay with this administration. He works for me. And I think it's good for the fire, for the fire, for the firemen, the firewomen out there, the fire personnel that are not part of this lawsuit, to actually, he can speak on behalf of those people who do keep the city of Kenner safe.
Okay. I understand that, and I'm-
He's, he's limited on his comments.
Okay. And this is where I'm going back to legal. Be mindful of his comments. If it touches, stop it. I don't want administration allowing our interim fire chief to make comments that can jeopardize the lawsuits. He can talk on his business of operating the fire department under your-
We appreciate your concerns, and we are, like I said, we're prepared to make limited comments. The administration's comfortable with it. Your city attorneys are comfortable with it.
Okay.
This would not be the first time either that he's been on public record, because he's been interviewed, I think, by two stations on this, not the, not the, not the Advocate, but at least two stations he's been interviewed on fire department issues that are pending.
I don't have a problem with him talking on fire department issues under his command.
I got you.
Not litigation right now.
He understands. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You know that.
Councilman Segura, his comments will be limited to the, the fire, an operator in a temporary appointment as, as a captain. It's not, he is not going to comment on the mandamus suit, and he is not going to go any further in his comments than, than we have already, as, as the city attorney's office sat through with him in, in other, that are already on the record through other media outlets. But it's, it's going to be limited comments as to firemen normally working up a class, which is not an unusual or unheard of or out of the ordinary proposition.
I appreciate that. I'm very much aware of that. So, I don't have, I understand that. But just keep it in line. I'm finished, Council.
Thank you, Council.
As your, as your deputy city attorney, I have no problem stopping him if he gets too far.
Chief?
Interim Fire Chief Terrence Morris. I just want to comment on the fact that, first of all, I do my very best to make certain that the citizens of Kenner are well protected. Throughout the United States of America, firemen are always asked to work in the next rank-up. That's how you gain your training. That's how you improve yourself, your awareness of situations that you may encounter, through that experience. Each one of you realized when you started on this position, in your position, that you're in, your first day was rough. The more you did it, the better you became at it. It's the same situation with fire protection. The more you do it, the better you become at it. So, we've asked guys to step up and do that. A few guys don't want to, for whatever reason. They filed the lawsuit, and that's where we are with this. But I can promise you that the city of Kenner will remain protected.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Council clerk?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a point of clarification. It is no fault of the administration that the last special session was not recorded. It was an error on the council clerk's part. The email that went out did not include KTV. They were not aware of the special session. It was posted on the doors. It was posted in the official journal. There was no vote taken. However, they were omitted on the email. We thought we included them. It was the budget hearing notice that we sent out that we included them. However, please know, it was not the administration's fault, or the mayor, or anyone else's fault, that they were not here. Okay?
Thank you, council clerk. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, like, thank you, Madam Clerk, for that information. And obviously, that is something we can address after we, you know, get all the facts and information. And we look forward to, to addressing both Mr. Brown's concerns, the public's concerns, and everyone else. Also, you know, I appreciate Councilman Segura, you know, support and understanding and wanting to make sure we don't put ourselves in a, in a compromising position. But I would like to say that, from my tenure on the council with Attorney Russell, and all of the attorneys that have sat in that seat, they have never let us go in that direction. Whenever, whenever she, her, is like a dog whistle, when someone says one, one word, she immediately steps up, and she does her job. You know, that's not our job, obviously. It's her job. And she's done a great job, and all of the attorneys in our seat. So, I have the confidence that whenever anyone will start that conversation, she is listening, along with Mr. Rapiere, to ensure, and even Ms. Foshee, she's an attorney, I won't leave her out the, out the group. She'll whisper to the league. But I have confidence in that, that it won't get us in that position. It will never go down that far. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Alessandro?
Hello again. Stacy Alessandro, 3309 Chateau Boulevard. My first comment, and you guys, I'm sorry, I have a condition that's really flaring up today. It makes it very difficult for me to speak, so my voice is a little strangled. But anyway, no, it's thyroid condition that just flares up, and it strangles my vocal cords. But anyway, Councilman Brannigan, I wanted to thank you for that Kenner First initiative. I think it's fantastic, very forward-thinking. I think a lot of people are getting more involved with shopping Kenner First because of that initiative, so I applaud you for that. Councilwoman McKinney, thank you for clarifying that that ordinance is all, or I don't know if it's an ordinance, but whatever, is only for veterans. Thank you for that. Ms. Russell, I wanted to apologize to you if I came across a little harsh when I was asking you earlier if it was illegal. I didn't mean to come across like that. The point I was trying to make, which I didn't do a good job of, was that I feel like it's illegal right now, what they're doing. And especially like, if you're saying like, using it as parking spaces, the only way to use a parking space from the street to the sidewalk would be to pull in. To get out, you'd have to back up onto veterans, which is also illegal. I just don't see how signing a lease with somebody makes these illegal activities suddenly legal. That was the point I was trying to make, but I'm sorry if I came across harsh on that. My last comment, which I wasn't even going to talk about, is on this fireman thing. And I think it's very important for me to say this. First of all, I think Mr. Brown, it wasn't fake news, like the mayor was saying. Maybe what you think is being said is fake news. But the, there is two litigations going on right now with the city and the firemen. And I'm going to try to say this quickly. It's very difficult. Right now, the city, there is a writ of mandamus issued against the city directing them. And as Mr. Rapiere said, he said, it's just saying that there's some, there may be some lists out there. We don't even know if there's a list. But that's, he said, he said, well, he said a list, and he said, we're not even sure if there's a list. We're, we're, there's some discussion about which list it is.
That's not what he said.
Okay. Well, what do you, I would like to-
He said that the city is to appoint a fire chief from a qualified list.
Ms. Russell, Ms. Russell, may I stop you for a moment? Ms. Alessandro, why don't you finish, because your time's almost up, and then-
Okay. So, I just want to, this is public record. So, well, whatever, it's fine with me if you want- me if you want to answer.
I'll let Mr. Rapier answer, because you're putting words in his mouth, and I'd like for him to clarify.
Well, do you want him to clarify what he said first? And, I mean, I want to, I want to be accurate here.
And you're not, and you're not, so I'd like for, yes, him to respond.
Okay, please. Yeah, I want that, too.
The mandamus action, the court ordered the city to do what the law currently requires the city to do, which is to appoint a fire chief from a qualified list. The city, as it told the judge, is questioning the qualifications on the list, and that's up for hearing in front of the Civil Service Board on Tuesday night. If the Civil Service Board determines that there is no qualified candidates on the list, there is no qualified list to appoint from. The city, by law, has 60 days from the date of Chief Bergeron's resignation to appoint a fire chief from a qualified list. If there's no qualified list, then the city can appoint an interim fire chief from anywhere it wants to while a test is performed, while our chief's test is called for, and the chief test is administered. The city is also calling for a job study to be done, or a job description study done by the Office of State Examiner, because the last time, the, our current job description of fire chief is incorrect, inaccurate, and internally inconsistent. So there will not be, or cannot be, another chief's test until such time as the Office of State Examiner advises the city as to the terms and definitions and qualifications to go into the chief's job description in order to call for a test. So currently, to compress all of this, we have a, we have, we have told the court, and the court has ordered the city, to do what the law says to do, which is to appoint from a qualified list by June, I think it's 16th. The Civil Service Board has the ability to say the list that is currently there either is qualified or is not qualified. So that is what the city is doing. It has observed, it has reviewed the list, it has concerns with the list, it is bringing those in front of the Fire Civil Service Board for hearing on Tuesday night. If the Civil Service Board leaves the list in place, the city then has until June 15th to make a decision as to who it would want to appoint off of that list. If the Civil Service Board determines that the list is not, there's no qualified candidates on that list, because the job description for which the list and test was called for is factually inaccurate to begin with, so you can't have a qualified list if your job description is factually inaccurate, then we will not have a list to pick from, and the city will move forward from that, based, and waiting on the job study by the Office of State Examiner. I hope I answered the question.
Thank you.
Okay, so I find it very difficult, that the entire city of Kenner, out of all the fine firemen that we have, that we don't have one person in this whole city in all these years that is qualified to step in from the city of Kenner, that we have to look to outside sources. I don't understand why, all of a sudden, now the qualifications are being called into question, that they're not good enough, they're not accurate, now, all of a sudden.
Ms. Alessandro, your time is up.
Well, I would encourage the public, the writ of mandamus is online, and it is, there is a specific list. It's not "A-list," it's "the" list, and it has six qualified candidates on it right now. It's not "A-list," it's "the" list.
Thank you, Ms. Alessandro. Pastor Cockham?
Pastor Jackie Brown Cockham, 2610 Decatur Street, Apartment 8. I'd like to thank Mr. Muhammad and Mayor Zahn for making it really nice, magnificently clean over on Decatur Street, where the wall was taken down, and the area cleaned. I am concerned about maybe having a prevented, taking a preventative measure to maybe have some hedges along that line, that area, because the children are playing now, and the canal is wide open. I would not want any of them to end up running in that canal. So if you can help us with that, that would be great. I heard about the sidewalks along Veterans. Hopefully, they're going to be along Veteran Heights. They're going to have something done in Veteran Heights. And of course, the curbside, it's really nice out there on Loyola and different other areas of the city. So I think that rustic-like look along the intersections at Veterans Boulevard would really be nice. Another concern, and just give me an answer when you, when I finish, will be the noise wall. It's nothing like the noise wall on the interstate. It is about, only about eight feet tall, and it stops right at the canal, and then there's a chain-linked fence. Well, in that curved area, going toward the airport, we're going to be dealing with about eight lanes of traffic back and forth. That little short wall, and the cutoff point of that wall is not really going, won't really help us. It's going to be a noise problem. The other thing is, let's see, excuse me a minute. Oh, about the grants from the RITA. Hopefully, we'd be able to use some of that, some of that would help our district. And if at all possible, can we get a proposal or request out there to Pat and Henry Shane or Mr. Ledbetter about sculptures along Veterans Boulevard? I think that would really be nice, Councilman. Administrators, I think that would really be great.
(inaudible)
Say what? And we do need to get that fire station up. We're unprotected. We have no covering when it comes to fire hazards in Susan Park and Veteran Heights subdivision.
Thank you, Pastor, your time is up.
Again, everything is looking beautiful.
Thank you, Pastor, your time is up.
Thank you so much. Any comments, suggestions? Help me out.
Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Cockham. I will get with the parish, along with Councilman Carroll, but that's par, parish, I think, I think it's parish property that we're talking about, and see what the parish council can go ahead and put in there. We don't, we'd rather not put money into parish property, but the parish can put some money into their own property of the city of Kenner. So my office, along with Councilman Carroll's office, will contact Councilman Marxbeers of that council district and, on the parish, and see what we can do.
Okay.
But the beautification part, the other things Deborah's going to talk to you about after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and Pastor, yes, just to echo what the mayor said, all of that is part of the plans to ensure that the corridor for Veteran Heights and Susan Park, the sidewalks, the curb appeal, all of that is just part of making it look better, as you said. So all of that is together with that, that part. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Pastor.
Is it? Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Seeing no other discussion, entertain a motion to adjourn? No move?
(inaudible). Girl, we're so glad. Tell them we're here. I'm usually busy. (inaudible). 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 (inaudible).